Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Atoma City Council meeting. Before we start with our regular city council meeting, though, we are going to have a brief Atoma Board of Health meeting first because we have three properties that we'll be talking about tonight for condemnation. So I'm going to go ahead and call the Atoma Board of Health meeting to order, and Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway? Councilmember McIntyre?
Here.
Councilmember Basu?
Here.
Mayor Johnson?
Here.
Approve the minutes for meeting number two on May 7, 2024, as presented. Recommendation: Approve the minutes.
Is there a motion?
Move the recommendation.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
This is the time, place, and date set to consider condemnation of the structures on the property located at 851 South Davis in the city of Atoma, Wapalo County, Iowa.
I'm going to go ahead and open the condemnation hearing, and I believe Mr. Simonson is going to present on this.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. The property at 852 South Davis was placarded March 3, 2023. It was placarded for structural issues and lack of utilities. Since it's been placarded, we've had to add it to the city's recurring mowing list, and we've also had to do a nuisance abatement cleanup in the yard. There have been several missed inspections. We don't have any consistent contact with the property owner, and they've made no attempt at repair or submitted a repair plan. Staff recommendation would be to condemn the property, demolish it, and assess the cost of taxes.
Is it 852 or 851?
851.
851.
Okay. You said two. That's what I wanted to clarify.
Yep, 851. Sorry about that. Misspoke.
Does Council have any questions for Zach? Regarding this property?
Move the recommendation.
Second.
We have to ask for the public if anybody wants to speak.
Since this is a public hearing, does anyone have any thing that they'd like to get up and say regarding this particular property? Okay, if not, I'd go ahead and entertain a motion to close the condemnation hearing.
So move.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Condemn the structures located at 851 South Davis, order prompt demolition, removal, and leveling of the lot, and direct all costs attendant to such actions, including administrative costs, to be assessed against the property and/or collected from the owner or owners thereof. Recommendation: Approve the condemnation of the structures located at 851 South Davis.
Move the recommendation.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
This is the time, place, and date set to consider condemnation of the structures on the property located at 1515 West Main in the city of Atoma, Wapalo County, Iowa.
I'll go ahead and open the condemnation hearing, and Zach, you're going to also handle this.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The structure located at 1515 West Main was placarded November 30 of 2023, again for poor living conditions, this time in lack of utilities. Since it was placarded, we've had to secure, had our contractors secure the property because it was continually left open to the elements and to squatters. We had to do an extensive cleanup of the yard as well. There have been several missed inspections and no attempt to repair the property or repair plan on file. The staff recommendation is also to condemn this property.
Does Council have any questions for Zach? If not, since this is a public hearing, does anyone in the audience want to speak regarding this particular property? Okay, if not, I'd entertain a motion to close the condemnation hearing.
So move.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Condemn the structures located at 1515 West Main, order prompt demolition, removal, and leveling of the lot, and direct all costs attendant to such actions, including administrative costs, to be assessed against the property and/or collected from the owner or owners thereof. Recommendation: Approve the condemnation of the structures located at 1515 West Main Street.
Move the recommendation.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
This is the time, place, and date set to consider condemnation of the structures on the property located at 120 North Davis in the city of Atoma, Wapalo County, Iowa.
I'm going to go ahead and open the condemnation hearing, and Zach, you're going to review this as well.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. These are all pretty similar cases and profiled tonight. The structure at 120 North Davis was placarded April 10 of 2023. In this case, it was placarded due to poor living conditions, lack of utilities, and there were some life safety issues with the property as well. Since being placarded, this house has also had to be secured by the contractor. We've also had to do a cleanup of this yard, and we've had to mow it on several occasions. There have been, again, several missed inspections, and at this time, no attempt to repair the property or repair plan on file, so the recommendation is to condemn this one.
Council have any questions for Zach? If not, does anyone in the audience have any comments, questions they'd like to ask regarding this particular property? If not, I'd entertain a motion to close the condemnation hearing.
So move.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Condemn the structures located at 120 North Davis, order prompt demolition, removal, and leveling of the lot, and direct all costs attendant to such actions, including administrative costs, to be assessed against the property and/or collected from the owner or owners thereof. Recommendation: Approve the condemnation of the structures located at 120 North Davis Street.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Move the recommendation.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Is there any other business that needs to come before the Board of Health this evening? If not, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn the Board of Health meeting.
So move.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and call the Atoma City Council meeting to order, and if everybody would rise for their pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yeah, here.
Councilmember Galloway? Mayor Johnson?
Here.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is to approve tonight's consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Move that consent.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Okay, the next item is to approve our agenda for tonight's city council meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve. Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is a city administrator's report to council and the citizens of Atoma. I'm going to turn it over to Phil Rath, our city administrator.
All right. Thank you, Honorable Mayor. At the last meeting, it was, Councilman Cavaness had asked about an update on a conference that I had attended in the recent past of that council meeting, and so I just wanted to provide that for the council and community. So it was an Iowa City Administrator Municipal City Administrator Conference, and it was over roughly like a day and a half. The keynote covered the first half of the day. That was presented by Chris Lee. He is an organizational culture and leadership consultant. Prior to that role, Lee worked as an ecologist, and the sessions focused on ecology and how seeing the workplace as a habitat can improve the working environment. Lee discussed the importance of creating a habitat where the proper conditions exist for people to thrive, and that all starts with having values-based culture. From there, it's important to conduct workplace assessments to ensure the proper environment and habitat continue to exist and adjust to any external challenges or changes that occur. Other sessions included an overview of the public policy program at UNI or University of Northern Iowa and their efforts to increase the quantity of qualified candidates for management roles in the state of Iowa, specifically around municipal management. There was another session noted increased awareness for preparedness and response to cyber incidents. As more duties and services move to digital and online platforms, there's an increased need for cybersecurity and protection against loss of data or operational lockdowns. There was another session, a case study of Mount Vernon and their work with a marketing company called De novo. That session focused on that city's efforts to redesign their website to ensure compliance with ADA standards and also improve dissemination of information. And then the final session focused on legislative updates from the prior legislative session, more specifically qualifications-based selection process related to professional services. So that was just kind of an update from that conference. And then also, I just kind of wanted to talk briefly about open communication. It's one of the four core values that the city had established. Again, those were teamwork, accountability, continuous improvement, and open communication. Since the previous meeting, there's been a number of comments and accusations made about myself, other staff, city council members, some of a professional nature and others of personal. Working in the public sector, I understand that there will be opposing views to decisions or operational execution. When those are stated in a civil manner, comments could even be productive. Concern is when personal attacks, unverified comments, or incorrect information is stated in an attempt to be passed off as fact. That can be detrimental and have a detrimental effect to the primary purpose of local government, which is to provide services to the public. Although I would be interested in meeting with anyone who has questions or concerns about their city government, I didn't plan to take tonight to address any, each of those comments floating around. In an effort to provide more information about government services, however, I am currently working on an electronic community communication. Until that first edition comes out, I would like to address one current topic, which is the hiring of public safety staff. Public safety positions, including a police chief and fire chief, are subject to the civil service process in the city of Atoma. That process is governed under Chapter 400 of the Iowa Code and under the purview of the Civil Service Commission. The Commission is charged with ensuring transparency, fairness, and meritocracy in the administration of the applicants for hire and/or promotion. The Commission approves the notice for application, the assessment process, and qualified candidates to be placed on a list of eligible applicants that are eligible then for hire or promotion for any vacant civil service positions within the city. If anyone's looking for more information about that process, they can either visit the city's website, which has a section for civil service, or they can look up the Iowa Code, Chapter 400, and get more information there. And now, take any questions from the council.
Council have any questions for Phil? Is that everything? Okay. The next item is, we have two public hearings tonight, so Chris can start with that.
Do we have anybody else that wanted to fill these out?
Is there anybody else that wanted to fill out these sheets that want to speak tonight?
Nope.
Because I'll call you up when we get to that topic on the agenda.
Ready for me to go?
Yeah, go ahead.
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing approving the plan, specifications, form of contract, and estimated costs for the water pollution control facility aeration system improvements project.
I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, and I believe Phil Burton Meyer, our Public Works Director, is going to handle this.
Thank you, Mayor. So if you remember, two contracts were let in the fall of 2023 to purchase equipment for aeration system improvements for the water pollution control facility. Most of that equipment's come in. We're still waiting on some valves to come in in November, or sorry, beginning September, but we thought we'd get a jump on it and do this project, which is to install the equipment that we ordered and to modify existing blowers. It'll help the blowers better align with the current aeration needs, and it'll allow the aeration to be constantly adjusted up and down to match what the oxygen demand is. The bids will be received and opened by the city council on October 28. The bid report and bid award recommendations will be presented to the city council at a meeting on September 3 or at a later date as determined by staff. The engineer's estimate for this contract is $306,574. This is more than $365,858 remaining in the budget for construction of the improvements. This increase in cost is due to inflation that's occurred since this project budget was set in the fall of 2022. But additional funding, if needed, will come from the sewer fund balance.
Does Council have any questions for Phil?
Where did you say the additional cost would come from?
Sewer fund balance.
Sewer fund balance.
Yep.
All right. Thank you.
Since this is a public hearing, does anyone in the audience have any comments they'd like to make regarding this particular item? Okay, if not, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Resolution number 176, 2024, approving the plan, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the water pollution control facility aeration system improvements project. Recommendation: Pass and adopt resolution number 176, 2024.
Move the recommendation.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Thank you.
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing on proposed ordinance number 3233, 2024, amending the code of ordinances by changing the zoning classification of property known as 1014 North Elm Street, lots 30, 31, 32, and 33 in East Atoma, in addition to the city of Atoma, Wapalo County, Iowa, from R2 two-family residential district to R4 multifamily residential medium-density district.
I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, and I believe Mr. Simonson's going to address this item.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. The applicant is seeking rezoning of this property, which is currently used as the Family Crisis Center, from R2 two-family residential to R4 multifamily residential medium-density, in order to create nine dwelling units that would be used by Central Iowa Shelters and Services or the Rolling Hills Coalition for supporting their mission of eliminating homelessness in Wapalo County by providing permanent supportive housing. There's one thing I want to address immediately that kind of came to our attention tonight. So we serve notices required by law by publishing notice of rezoning hearings in the paper, but we also do a couple of things that are over and above that. One, we require the property owners to post a sign on the property, which was done in this case, and then we also send notices to property owners within 200 feet. Something that's never come up, or at least hasn't been brought to my attention before, is that the way we send those letters to the property owners within 200 feet is we take the address of record that's the primary with the assessor's office. I was approached by at least a few people tonight who own units in condominiums, and we don't, in our current process, pull all of the individual unit owners within a condominium complex and also send them notice. That's something that I want to revisit and make sure we do. I agree, based on the comments that they've already given me tonight, that because they own their units and they, you know, pay their own property tax and things like that, they should be able to get a notice. We're going to have to figure out a good way of getting those notices together. I don't know what mechanism we'll use to pull that yet, but there has to be a way we can do it. That's something we're going to look at doing going forward. Obviously, it looks like a lot of folks were still able to get word of the meeting, and I understand that that was not as easy as it should have been, and so we do want to improve that going forward. If the council does, based on their feedback, still want to continue a public hearing and have us try to send out additional letters to each, you know, owner within a complex, we can try to put that process together as quick as possible and do a public hearing again at a future date. That's probably an approach we can take if that's a concern. It does sound like there were a lot of folks who were able to still receive that notice, and they might be able to provide what they think should be a path forward on that as well. I do think that if we do continue the public hearing, though, we should at least allow those folks to talk tonight. And I don't think that, you know, my recommendation would not necessarily be to continue that hearing unless, based on feedback, we have a really strong reason to think we should, but that's an idea to kind of put forward for consideration. Looking at the actual item itself, this is a rezoning, which means Section 38966 of the city zoning code sets forward some things that the council is supposed to consider, and the Plan and Zoning Commission considered these items last night at their meeting, and they did recommend the rezoning. Those items are, number one, conformance to the Future Land Use Plan. In this case, the Commission did recommend that at the next amendment to the Comprehensive Plan, we do make a small amendment to the Future Land Use Plan. Currently, the Future Land Use Plan identifies this parcel as suitable for low-density land use, and they recommend that we do change that to medium-density land use at the next amendment of the Comprehensive Plan. In this case, the way the Family Crisis Center uses the property in the past and uses it today is a little bit out of conformance with the traditional R2 zoning anyway. It's an existing non-conforming use there, either when they used it in the past to actually house folks, or as their mission has changed now, they don't actually have any housing on that facility, but they use it for offices and some other things, which are also kind of in conflict with the zoning. So really, regardless of how this goes forward, we probably need to revisit that land use category, and they did recommend doing that. But then the other items are conformance with the objectives and goals of the Comprehensive Plan. In that case, this project does align very well. There's a number of goals in the Comprehensive Plan that we believe are advanced here, including continuing partnerships with community development to build new housing, identifying infill areas for new housing development, and building new housing to ensure that all Atomans who qualify for federal housing choice vouchers can find a quality place to live. The rezoning would also advance the priorities of the 2022 Atoma Housing Plan by adding new units toward the goal of 500 units by 2030. Compatibility with the surrounding development is the third item to look at. Surrounding development includes a mix of single-family and multifamily housing. Directly to the south, there's an apartment building with multiple units. There's also townhomes. The Atoma Housing Authority has a load of moderate-income development 700 feet to the north, so multifamily use is not incompatible with the surrounding development, and the current use of the building is certainly more suitable for multifamily, or the current building there that is certainly more suitable for multifamily use as well. Potential hardships are the fourth item we're supposed to look at. Multifamily residential use is generally consistent with the current use, or at least the previous use when they did house folks that were unrelated, were multiple families, multiple folks with their children staying there. And then supportive housing is described here would entail a host of services that are meant to support residents integrating with the community and also staff on site, which we believe would mitigate any concerns of nuisance. Item five, we're supposed to look at public utilities, and this property is already served by existing utilities, and we don't have a concern there. And then item six is the trend of development. There is a trend toward new housing development in the area, generally with multifamily directly to the east, as well as some of the previously mentioned multifamily projects that have happened in that area as well. There is Sam Carroll here tonight from Central Iowa Shelter Services and the Rolling Hills Coalition. He's going to speak a little bit about how they intend to run this project and what it'll be. As a really brief overview, they're looking at adding an additional wing onto the building beyond what exists there today so that they can have the total of nine units. It's about a $2.1 million project that will also leverage some funding they receive from the state of Iowa. But I'll hand it over to Sam, and he can talk about the project a little bit and also answer any questions you have. I can also be available for questions, and of course, I think there's public comments. Thank you.
My name's Sam Carroll. I'm with Central Iowa Shelters. I do their Director of Rural Development. I am based out of Des Moines. Don't hold that against me. I grew up in Columbus Junction, just down the street, so I'm a southeast Iowa boy. The Central Iowa Shelters was formed, it's the largest emergency shelter in the state of Iowa. It was formed by 11 churches in Des Moines when four people froze to death outside because there was no place to go. Since that mission, they've become Central Iowa Shelter Services. We not only have the largest emergency shelter in the state in Des Moines, but we also, to put people on a continuum so they're just not sheltered, but actually get back to self-sufficiency, we have food programs, job training programs, educational programs, and supportive housing programs. So we work very closely with private landlords to get people as they go along that continuum into their own sustainable housing. But we've also found in some cases it's good to have supportive housing that we continue to maintain and monitor and provide those services. That's what we're looking to do with Elm Street property and the family services. It's basically a continuum of a lot of the services that Lorraine and her staff already provide there, a little wider audience, but with the addition where that facility was originally built as a group home for ADA clients and then later became the Family Crisis Center for some of the domestic violence. We'll just be converting some of those rooms like you would see in a nursing home. It's, you know, individual rooms, but not really apartments, and so we'll be converting those and remodeling those into compartment, upgrading the facility, doing one additional wing just to put in, it'll be five one-bedroom and four two-bedroom apartments in there, all ADA compliant, not that they all need to be, but just that gives us the flexibility to work with the different folks that we do. We've been doing this a long time. I certainly appreciate, I've been talking to some of the neighbors, talked to some last night as well. I certainly understand those concerns. That's one of the reasons why we maintain the property, to make sure it stays nice and clean. It's also why we'll have staff on hand during the day to, again, provide those additional supports. And we've already been working in Wapalo County for a long time with our caseworkers. This gives them actually a home base in Atoma as well to work with the other organizations already in the community. So happy to answer any questions. Yeah.
What is your source of funding?
So for this particular project, we have an application in with a HomeARP, which is some of the leftover money from the pandemic through the Iowa Finance Authority. They really want to invest in Atoma, so they've given us a deadline to, I guess, an extension to November to accept this because they'd really like to do it. We have a couple deficiencies that I have to overcome. One of those is rezoning the property, and so the rest of them we've actually already addressed, but that's the, that's one of the ones.
Sorry, Bill. First of all, I love the vision of your organization, so thank you for the work that you do in communities. Yes, I know, Keith. I'm too quiet. What are some of the requirements for the residents that would be staying in these units?
So the, we'll fund a lot of this with Section 8 housing. That's also another source of the funding for ongoing support. So they have to qualify by income level, that type of thing. A lot of the people that we serve are the ones that won't qualify for other low-income, like they're working, but they can't either do a down payment, they can't afford the market rate rent, so we subsidize that, and they're able to pay according to what they can afford, and then we subsidize the rest. So it's all based on a formula that HUD has for one and two bedrooms, and I can look that up for you. I don't have it off the top of my head what those rates are for Atoma, but they're very specific to each community that we work in.
That's okay. And then one more thing. Your deadline for your funding was September?
Well, no, they've extended it to November for us to hit the deficiency, so the application's in, they love it. They just, there's certain things that they require, and so obviously, for the facility to be zoned correctly is one of those requirements.
And what is the overall timeline for the completion of this?
So under the assumption that we get approval after the third reading or something in So under the assumption that we get approval after a third reading or something in September, we'll turn all of that into them, then the development fee starts. So we would actually, then again, start working with the community, make sure for refining the construction plans and to have it completed by the end of 2025.
And the construction work would be from local contractors?
Yeah, we, we, we have to go through a bidding process, another one of the requirements, but we've actually used Estes Construction, and I don't know if they get that full package, but to just do the estimates on what the construction costs, because again, there's a lot of requirements in the grant, as you might expect. We picked Estes because they do a lot of work here in Atoma already, and they use a lot of Atoma subcontractors. And that's always, we try to do as much inside the community where their capacity is, as possible.
Thank you.
So, I know this dumb question, totally nonprofit, right? Totally nonprofit, correct?
Oh yeah, us, yes.
And is this housing, is it meant to move people in to get them back on their feet and then move them on, or is it meant for permanent living? I mean...
It's designed to be permanent living, but in a lot of cases, it gets them into a place where they can get that additional, you know, it gives them sustainability so they can go to the community college and get that tech training or something for the job that they really want that is sustainable. And then a lot of them do move on. They're not obligated to stay there forever.
Well, no, that's what I mean, they're not obligated, however, it's, it's a stepping stone.
Exactly, exactly.
Thank you.
That was the only concern that I had, and I'm going to speak from a former career that I had with the state of Iowa. I was hopeful that some of those would be transitional apartments, because a lot of housing programs, you know, I mean, you're going to offer supportive services, which is great, but a lot of homeless people can become self-sufficient over the course of six months to a year if they have some stability. And we have such a large homeless population here, if this is going to be permanent housing, there's not even going to be enough. And so I was kind of hopeful that maybe some of these units could be tagged as transitional units, so you constantly have some availability for other homeless people. Is that a possibility in this at all?
Well, it depended, as you know, transitional versus permanent housing.
Right.
So six months would qualify, I believe, for, in your mind, transitional, in my mind, transitional, and in their mind, that's permanent housing. So it's not built to be a one-month or two-month.
Right, that's not long.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's not, and I, and I like how the mayor asked it, it's not, the services they'll receive are meant to help them grow and move on?
Absolutely.
It's not to help them grow and stay?
Well, yes, but I'll give you a great example. So along with our 150 shelter beds in Des Moines, 100 for men, 50 for women, we have two more stories of that building that are, are this kind of housing, permanent one-bedroom kind of efficiencies, we call them. We have people that have stayed, stayed in those, one floor's all veterans, for instance, one floor's more of a general thing. We've had people that have been there for six months and then gotten to that point and moved on. We've had people that have been there for three or four years now. So it's, we, that choice is theirs, but there's always a plan, we, you know, that's what the caseworker comes in, is that plan to get them moving, and sometimes they even identify opportunities for them to get back to where their home community might be.
So it's the resources actually that make the difference?
Yeah.
And then what process do they have to go to get in?
So part of that facility is not just the supportive housing, is we, internally, we call it a Housing Command Center. And what that is, is that's where the caseworker, where we have offices for some of the other supportive services in town, where we'll continue what Lorraine's staff's already doing with like a clothing closet and a, and a food pantry and that type of thing to, again, assist in those type of things. But they will be there, you know, like, much like a business, each day of the week, and work with them and, and other people to keep them from becoming homeless, because you get a lot of, we work with a lot of people that, you know, are about to be evicted, and so we have some funding that we pull from emergency funding to get, to take care of those. So we, we approach it because everybody, we kind of try to meet people where they are and then get them down the road.
I got one more question, and I'll stop, and this is going to sound kind of mean to other towns. It will serve Atoma first, correct?
Yeah.
Because it would, with our homeless problem, I mean, it would, you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah.
I don't want to sound mean to other towns, but I, I just want to make sure it's not a, somebody's homeless in Sioux City and, and we're bringing them here.
No, we, and we...
Not that I don't want to help, that's not what I'm saying, I'm just saying with our own population.
Yeah, I want to emphasize that this is not a shelter. It is a, you know, it's more of a housing and then a, in a, in a housing service center.
Right, and I get that, I just want to make sure that...
In Des Moines, we get a lot of folks from all over.
Yeah, the Wapalo County, the, you know, because, because you know, if you have a home or homeless, to me, they're all citizens, they're all Atomans, and I just want to make sure that, that my citizens are taken care of.
Yeah, it's, and part of the reason why we work so closely with all the local, you know, services is because that's, you know, our, we have outreach caseworkers, I know when you, Turkey Island, am I saying that right? You know, Zach worked with Paul, our guy who's actually from this area as well. So we really try to focus then, and this is actually going to be a template for what we do in all of the 15 counties that we serve through the Rolling Hills Coalition. So you, you and Power Sheek are kind of our first two out of the gate.
Good, thank you.
You bet.
I got a question. I was concerned when you said that there'd be supervision during the day, but you never said nothing about nighttime.
No, typically, I mean, there might be overnight staff, it might be maintenance, I mean, and there'll be someone in the area, but these are, you know, it's not like a dorm room, right? This is, these are actually housing units.
Without night, without night supervision, it could turn into a dorm room. I mean, you're getting people off the street, then you got nine people all by themselves at a house, you know?
Well, and, and we go through a qualifying process too, to see who's suitable to be there. If we don't think they belong in that kind of community, we might take them to the shelter in Des Moines, for instance, until we get them to a place where we think they can be in that kind of, kind of atmosphere.
Is your nine units all going to be like one-bedroom units for like single people? Or are you going to have couples in there?
Now, we'll, we'll have families as well. We're, we're by, or we'll put in four one-bedrooms in this facility and two two-bedrooms, or I'm sorry, five one-bedrooms and four two-bedrooms. And then we also, part of the assets that, that the Family Crisis Center has another four-plex, which is already zoned complex, that we're also purchasing to have additional, for additional, two-bedroom units. So we'll have, like I say, we'll have people here, we work incredibly closely with Des Moines PD, the fire, the emergency management systems, the, you know, everybody, so if there is an issue, we'll address it, and if we have to bring in, you know, security, then we'll bring in security. But it's not the kind of people, I think, these are the, these are the folks that, that want to be in a place like this. It's, it's not the people that you kind of force inside because they, you know, they don't want to be there, but they're, they're under, they're, they're on a different trajectory.
So you will allow people with children to live here?
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
So if it's only a two-bedroom apartment, though, I assume they're going to be limited on how many kids they can have?
Well, we'll have flexibility too in the design, so sometimes we, you know, may, they may have two apartments, for instance, if it's a big family.
Oh, okay.
And we also, we'll work with Atoma Housing as well, because there's all, you know, there's, I'd like to tell you, there's just one silver bullet to solve all of them, but it isn't, because we, in Power Sheek this morning, or this afternoon, I was, and they were working with a group of nine, a family of nine, and so we were able to work with their housing authority and some of our funding streams to, to find a place that was suitable for that family.
Does council have any other questions before I ask people in the audience to come up? Okay, thank you for now.
You bet.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and call Chris Craver up. And when you come up, please give your name and your address, and you'll have three minutes to present.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Chris Craver. I'm a homeowner at 948...
You're going to pull your microphone up higher?
Sure. That's never been my problem before. I maybe even get a little closer there. I'm Chris Craver. I live at 948 North Elm, on the corner of East Court and North Elm, in a condominium. There are four taxpayers living in that unit. Only one was notified. My objection and my recommendation is, through observances, I've just learned most of this process tonight, so if anything that I've learned is incorrect, let me know. But what I am told is, you are, I guess, required by law to notify in a 200-foot radius of the rezoning, to notify the individuals who live there. I think it's a really weak radius, but nevertheless, the process that you currently have, as I am, as it's explained to me, is that you leave the developing of the list to the individual who doesn't know the community. So he makes the list based on what he sees on the address on the door, goes to the assessor's office, and provides the list to the city to notify. There evidently is no cross-checking or looking for errors in that list. Those letters just go out, the way he prepared the list, not through any intention to exclude anybody, but because he doesn't know the community, that's the way the list was prepared. One individual in a four-plex, a condominium unit, got that notification. That individual does not share it with anyone else. The other, the other one other thing that I noticed on his list is that a new development, and these are brand-new homes, being developed by, is it Kristner?
Yes.
Being developed by Kristner, currently, or at least it appears to currently still being listed as three undeveloped lots and one new home listed, and, and the actual address for that home. That homeowner was not notified at that address. They were, they were all notified through Kristner's. That homeowner found out word of mouth through another, through an employee. That process has left a lot of people out of the loop to address concerns to your zoning commission. My bottom line there is, it gives people a chance to question your, your efforts at transparency. I came in here hot, because it looked like you were avoiding talking to most of the people that are going to be involved in this zoning change. That's not the case, but you certainly could improve the process and maybe help yourselves out at the same time. I'd, I'd like to just ask each and every one of you, as well as I would have loved to have had a chance last night to, to address the zoning commission, and if I'm correct, there was only one individual here last night. I spoke to that lady today. She was here because her son told her about the meeting. She is one of those individuals who is listed in one of those gray year, is on the list that was provided. She did not get a list personally. My question to each and every one of you is, if you had built a brand-new home in the last six months, and there are three other brand-new homes to be built right next to you, would you be happy about this zoning change? Would you recommend this zoning change? Would you, would you want this zoning change if it were happening in your backyard? And I don't think any of you could say yes. Have I misrepresented anything incorrectly?
There's just a couple things I'd like to clarify. I don't, I don't want to interrupt you. What she described is pretty close to how the process works. We do ask the developer, or the rezoning applicant, to provide a list of addresses, but we do check that list.
Against what?
Against the assessor's records. And that's where the issue is with this one, is that these are condos, and the assessor's report for the address only shows one address, and that'd be the address of record, the address of service that they have at the county. But we don't serve the multiple owners within the condo by pulling the, the report from the assessor. So there is a gap there that we do want to solve related specifically to condos, and that's where there was a, a miss here, and we're going to try to change the process to solve that. That one, so that is one that was not included in his list, but was included in ours, where we did send an address, we did send a letter to 1050 East Court.
Taxpayers with an actual residence, an address, within your 200-feet radius. One, two, three. At least four people that I can identify in the last six hours did not receive notices, could not attend last night to address any of the specific questions that we might have for you, or for you, to the zoning commission, and I don't know that it would have made a difference in their recommendation. But again, would each and every one of those individuals, as well as you folks, if you had just built one of those new houses, one of those brand-new houses, would you vote yes for this zoning change if it happened in your backyard? Anything else I can...
Is, is your opposition the, that it would be too much in the back? I mean, what's, what's your opposition?
My opposition is based on what I, what little I have heard, excuse me, what little I have heard about the development, and I agree with your comment about supervision during the day and supervision at night are two entirely different games. The fact that these people have been screened, and I don't mean these people in a negative way, but the fact that these people have been screened doesn't mean that their lifestyle is going to be acceptable to the rest of the neighborhood.
Well, hold right there. So somebody who's struggling financially or a homeless person, how do you define them different than everybody else?
I just said, just because they...
No, no, you did say, you did say their lifestyle. So somebody who's struggling financially or somebody who's homeless are not different than you and me. So is your opposition, are you, are you claiming a type of people that would live there? Because that sounds like what you're doing.
No, I am, I am claiming that the life experiences that they have right now, the difficulties that they have right now, whether it be the circle of friends they have, whether it be the types of things they can't get involved in because they financially are not able to, have led them to a situation where they might be exposed to other, other elements of people around them.
Are you grouping them all into a group?
No, but I am...
I mean, because what if it was Zach moving in?
I was just agreeing with what he said in the fact that supervision during the day could turn into a dorm room situation at night.
Or what if it was me? And he explained that it's not a dorm room situation. Doug had a great question, and he had to clarify. I'm, I'm just concerned that, you know, if you would have come up and said, hey, we built four new homes, and now you're putting some new homes, it's making the neighborhood really tight.
I don't even own the new homes.
But now you're bringing a type of people into it, and that concerns me.
I don't even own the new homes.
Right, I understand. I just want to clarify that, just because somebody's having financial troubles or somebody's homeless, there's, there's many people who are homeless for different reasons, and, and we shouldn't group them like by who they're friends with, or what they might do, or what they might expose us to.
I don't want to group them into that.
Okay.
But from a single-family residential neighborhood, and I agree that probably what was, and I've gone over my three minutes, I apologize, what probably was intended for that group home originally hasn't been happening that way in quite a while, at least I haven't witnessed it. I know they're using those facilities as offices and storage, that's my understanding. But if the facility is going to be left unsupervised during the night, just like in any other home, my neighbor to the south could have a party every night if they wanted to, and, and there'd be nobody there to stop them. But in an environment where, where you've got several families or individuals, you don't have any knowledge of what might...
Right, so in, in town, in other places, we have some market-rate housing going up, some new housing, some other good housing, right? So should I put security in those?
I'm not aware of what we're talking about.
There, there's some market-rate housing going on that we're familiar with. What, what was the locations, the, we're putting up some market-rate housing, we're putting up some other different housing? The, the housing that already exists, should I put security in them as well?
No.
There's families and different individuals living in there.
No, they have to deal with the environment and the neighbors there that are around them, and, and if it's necessary that somebody intervenes in something that happens there, so be it. And I'm not challenging the individuals that are there. I am challenging the fact that your process led several of us not to have the opportunity to address your zoning commission.
I absolutely understand the process, and Zach, you're going to fix that, and I, and I agree with you, that needs fixed.
I would like for this to go back to the zoning commission and start your three, your three hearing over. That is my request.
And you know what, I'm not against that. I mean, I absolutely know that. My concern is just, as long as we're just not grouping some people, like saying that one group of people needs security, another group doesn't, or...
No, I'm saying my neighbor to the south could be a problem, and my neighbor to the north can be fine. That, that's, I just want the opportunity to address the individual questions that the people had who didn't receive notices.
Zach, can we do that?
So a couple of things. I do want to specifically say again that we did follow the process as described in the code. I think there's a gap in that process specifically related to condos that we want to solve. I don't know yet how we're going to fix that, because I can't go directly to the assessor and get a list of who owns a unit in the condo complex, at least through the way we get our addresses right now. So it's going to have to be looked at how we solve that. We can try to do that as quickly as we can. It's absolutely your right to send it back to the Plan and Zoning Commission for another recommendation and for them to have another public hearing. But we did follow the process as it's set out now. We found an issue. I do think that a lot of the folks that are here tonight were able to get here because of other types of, other ways that the notices worked, and I do think that, you know, they've had the chance to provide that feedback. I, you know, it's not my recommendation to do it, but you absolutely can. I think it'd be the, you know, the way to be absolutely sure that everybody had the feedback they wanted to give, so I definitely would be, you know, happy to work along with that, and to do that to whatever your, your decision would be.
Well, Zach, I appreciate you willing to work with him, and how do I go about, I would like to motion to do that, that it go back, everybody gets their chance to speak.
I would say, if there is anybody else on the list that wanted to speak on this item, we should at least take any comment that is here tonight.
That's the only one we have.
Okay.
Was there anybody else that wanted to come up and speak on this topic?
Zach, I think, I'm sorry, Your Honor, if you have someone else, I'll be quiet.
Lorraine, did you want to come up and speak?
Yeah, I just want to make a comment. And Zach, Zach stated this earlier when he came up and presented at the very beginning, this building, since its inception, has been used for multiple families living in the same building. We have 16 bedrooms in that facility. When TenCo built it as a group home for people with disabilities, you know, when it was originated and HUD funded the whole thing, that's who lived there then. Then we got it from TenCo, and it has been used as shelter. We have had 35, 40 people in that that, you know, weren't related, you know, women and their children, living in that shelter. We still occasionally have people who stay there if we don't have any other options for them. So people building there and moving in, should, I mean, we've been there, you know, the Crisis Center has been there for, gosh, 24 years, some, I mean, a long time. So I think... So I think that people knew what we were for a long time. It was maybe secret about, you know, what was there so that we would, for safety reasons. But we've been open about, you know, where we are and what we do for a long time. So I just wanted to state that, I mean, I hear what people are saying, but it has been used for multiple families forever.
Lorraine, is this generally a women's shelter? Or do you have both men and women that stay there occasionally?
We serve both men and women, so, but as far as who stays there now, we haven't had a man stay there in a while. There have been, they have been in the past. But, you know, we serve, we look at everybody's needs individually and serve them as best we can based on their needs.
Is there a method of separation, so that if a man is staying there, he's not sleeping next to the lady next door?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
But they're going to redo the whole thing anyway, and they're going to have apartments. So it's not, what they're going to run is not what we're running, other than, my point is, it's always been multifamily. So it apparently was zoned wrong for all of these years, because that's how it's always been used. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
I would like to make a comment before, because I know there was talk about sending this item back to Planning and Zoning. And I think many people that know me or have known me since like I was 12 or older would not have guessed that I was one of those children suffering from homelessness in shelter to shelter. And it is opportunities like this that allowed me the privilege to sit where I am today. So when I say thank you, I mean thank you. And I think sometimes we confuse those who are suffering from homelessness as the problem when homelessness itself is the problem. Sending this item back and then continuing with the public hearings and the many ordinances and the process that is democracy, which we love and are frustrated with at the same time, will hurt the funding for this program. And at the end of the day, this is a good program for our community. We know that we have a problem providing housing for those who are suffering with homelessness in our community. It's part of our plan. And so before we continue to talk about sending this item back, please be thinking about the due process and what comes with that and what the detriment could be because of that in this case. Thank you.
Zach, what is our timeframe?
So, without being able to do any kind of special meeting, the next Plan and Zoning meeting would be the first Monday, well, not the first Monday in September, that's Labor Day, so it would probably be the second Monday in September, which would mean that the next council public hearing would be the second meeting in September. And then you would have three considerations if you were to pass each one, so you'd be looking at the final meeting in October, where you'd be able to finish the rezoning.
We're not allowed to have a special meeting?
We could have a special Plan and Zoning meeting if we're able to get all of the members, or at least a quorum of the members, to be present. Right now, there's only four members appointed to that commission, so we'd need to have at least three of them attend to be able to have a meeting. I think at the next meeting, you're going to be reappointing a fifth member to that commission, but it would depend on where the special meeting falls.
And just a point of clarification, sending it back to Planning and Zoning doesn't necessarily change anything. I mean, even if they change, the only thing that could possibly happen is if they changed their recommendation, they'd recommend not to approve it. You still have the ultimate authority on approving it or not. So their recommendation currently is to approve it. You still have tonight, if you approve the first reading tonight, there's still the second and third readings. There's still two other opportunities for people to speak that may be not here tonight to determine if you wanted to approve it all the way through. So you could send it back to Planning and Zoning, but that doesn't necessarily change anything. You could still turn it down, whether tonight, the second reading, the third reading, final reading, and that would not change what a recommendation they push forward.
And that's right. And to be totally transparent, I mean, I always promised transparency. I actually support the program, so I don't want, I want people to have their say. However, I don't want to hold anything up either, so.
And if it would be adequate, we could have, I mean, there's two more considerations. We can track down the addresses we need to send additional notices to and invite people to attend the second and third consideration meetings to, I don't know if the attorney would weigh in, but I don't think there's anything that stops us from holding as many public hearings as we want to, as long as we hold at least one.
Right.
And so, you know, the issue is not that we missed a legal obligation. Over and above what Iowa code requires, our code requires we send notices to the address of record within 200 feet, which we did do. But I agree that that process needs to be changed to account for condominiums that hasn't come up before, and it is important. And I do think that all of these owners who have expressed their frustration are correct that a horizontal property regime should give the same rights of ownership as if you owned a house. And so I want to make sure that we change that process and include them to the best of our ability. The Plan and Zoning recommendation isn't binding. It would certainly allow us to go a little bit quicker if we didn't go all the way back to that step, but I also want to make sure that we get the amount of feedback the council and everybody believes is appropriate. So we'll do whatever we have to do, so.
Your Honor, could I make a comment, please?
Go ahead.
What I hear from the conversation of this lady who represented several people here this evening was that the biggest complaint is that people were not notified so they could attend the meeting, so they could ask questions and know what's going on. And I certainly agree with her suggestion that, I don't know who figured out 200 feet was good, but why didn't it 600 feet? Or why isn't it 1,000 feet? And why, if we cannot get communications to those residents in that area, why can't we send someone with a letter, put it on their door if they don't answer, and at least inform them something is going on? I think, what I hear, the biggest complaint is people just didn't feel like they were being included.
Yeah, and I agree with that. And the 200 feet has been in the zoning code since at least 2015. I don't have an issue with going wider. The only thing about going wider is we have to spend a little more on postage, and I don't think that's a big deal. We can also look at changing that. The issue...
Put it on delivery person. Save the postage and go out and send them to the door.
I, per letter, it might cost us more in staff time to do that, but we'll see. Depends on how chatty people are when we knock, but...
So the 200 feet, that was going to be my question. The 200 feet, that's not state code?
It's not. My understanding is it's not state code.
Established by the city.
That's just the city's ordinance. And it is about, in the ordinance, it's about sending it to the address of record that's with the county assessor. And for a horizontal property regime, a condominium, there's only the one address. What I need to do going forward is get a list of all of those condo arrangements, and then we need to figure out how many units there are, then we need to figure out how they're addressed so that we can send something to all of those property owners. Or like Councilman Cavanagh said, at least go and post a notice there or whatever we have to do. And we're absolutely willing to do that. There's nothing that we want to hide or change about this.
As a member of the council, I would appreciate a note in my box so that I know what's going on. I don't live within 200 feet, but I should probably be there representing the city council, not overriding the zoning commission, but just there to listen and understand and answer questions if I can.
Yep. And you do get an email for the packets for the Plan and Zoning Commission. I can also print out a copy and put it in your box. Sounds like that might be the preferred, and I'll do that.
Sometimes I don't read all my emails.
That's totally fine. Yep, so that's what we'll do. That's what we'll do.
I'd like to say something if I could. I appreciate everybody speaking and talking, and I think the lack of communication, I'm not going to keep beating that horse, it has to get better. We, as council, mayor, and city administrator, we take a lot of heat sometimes, and sometimes we probably deserve it, but sometimes we don't. The last thing we want to do is invite it.
Yep.
You know what I mean? So enough about that. I was leaning either way back and forth, but I loved what Lori said. Throughout the years, there's been a lot more people in there living than what there would be after this is all said and done. I have a soft heart for the homeless for the last 15 years. Not uncommon for me to pull over and pick one up and call my wife and say, get another plate out, I'm bringing a homeless guy home, you know? They didn't, and we got to get out of the mentality, not that, you did not say that at all, kind of stereotyping this and that, but we got to get out of that mentality. Because this is the first thing I've heard in Otomo history that we just didn't open up a shelter so they can be warm in the winter. We're trying to build something up to get them so they can go out and be people that they probably always wanted to be. They didn't wake up when they was 10 years old and said, my goal when I get older is to be homeless and hope someone built an apartment for me. You know what I mean? So someone was kind of chewing my rear end out in the parking lot, and he had more information than I did, and he just found out about it. But I don't care if 18 people move next to me that are homeless. It wouldn't bother me a bit. I don't expect everyone else to be that way, but we got to stop this division. We want to tell them to grow, but then we want to drive by people that need help every day and not offer to help them at all. That's my take.
I agree. Does council have any other questions? Does anybody else in the audience want to speak? Okay, if not, I would go ahead and entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Show move.
Okay, just a second. Hang on.
Go ahead.
I apologize for interrupting. I just wanted to clarify the legal requirements for notice, if that would be helpful.
Sure.
So, under city code, it's Section 38-996, changes and amendments, beginning with the Planning and Zoning Commission. It's subsection F, related to notice, and that requires publication at least seven days in advance of the Planning and Zoning Commission's meeting. So there would have needed to be a published notice seven days before the P&amp;D meeting of the public hearing on this change. And then that requirement is the only requirement, and that applies also to this public hearing as well, that there be published notice seven days in advance. I believe what Zach is referring to, related to sending notices to property owners based on the assessor's page, it's a different process. It relates to administrative exceptions, to district regulations. So the zoning administrator has certain powers to make exceptions. That's under Section 38-1011, subsection B, and that's a separate process. So what Zach is describing, if that's correct, that there was a sign posted about the public hearing, and then there were also additional notices that went out, while they may not have gone to everyone, those were above and beyond steps taken compared to what the city code and the state code require.
Right. And what we've done in practice in our department, I feel like I'm in an elevator, what we've done in practice in our department is we've taken the most extreme version of notice that we use, which is the sending to within, property owners within 200 feet, for certain items. We use that for any of the public hearings that we do. We do it for variances, conditional use permits, rezonings, because we just, we want to try to be as transparent as possible. And I really do regret that the condo owners haven't been included in the process the way that I imagined it would have worked. I, looking at a list of addresses, I don't know that they're condos or not, but I do want to make sure that we close that loop. But, you know, as Logan said, we're trying to go over and be above what the Iowa code requires from us or even the city code.
Doesn't everybody in your condo have separate addresses?
Absolutely.
So I don't know why that would show up at the assessor's office.
Because it's all one parcel. And the assessor, the report that we pull when we do a buffer report within 200 feet is by parcel, and they have an address. I think there's probably an agreement for the horizontal property regime that's an address, kind of like an HOA, an address that is the one address for service. If, you know, if I was to have to sue the condo complex because they're discharging something on my property, there's one address you send that to, and that's the address we send all of our notices to as well. I would also say, you know, at their next condo board meeting, they could also raise the issue of making sure all notices come to all property owners. That would also be an approach, but I really want to just have the city be able to close that loop as well, so.
Okay, if there's no other questions from council and no one else in the audience has any questions, I would go ahead and entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Show move.
Second.
Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Ordinance number 3233-2024, amending the Code of Ordinances by changing and zoning classification of property known as 1014 North Elm Street from R2 to R4. Recommendation passed the first consideration of ordinance number 3233-2024.
Move the recommendation.
Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
No.
Councilmember Basu? Motion passes. Ready?
Yeah, we'll move on to ordinances next.
Ordinance number 3232-2024, amending Chapter 23, Motor Vehicles and Traffic of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Otomo, Iowa, by adding a new article, 16 golf carts therein for the purposes of regulating the operation of golf carts within the corporate limits of the City of Otomo, Iowa. Recommendation passed the first consideration of ordinance number 3232-2024.
Move the recommendation.
Second.
Okay, Phil, I believe you're going to cover this?
Yes. So at the May 21, 2024, meeting of the City Council, there was a citizen request introducing, that was introduced regarding the legalization and regulation of golf carts in city streets. City Council moved the request to a future work session for further discussion and consideration. That work session was held on June 11, where the City Council directed staff to draft language for review and consideration. City staff, along with the attorney, tailored city code from a code adopted in Pleasant Hill, Iowa. Draft of that work product was reviewed at the July 15 work session. A few minor revisions were offered, and the final product was attached for consideration. And this would be for the first reading of that ordinance.
Does council have any questions for Phil?
But I do have a comment. I know that I have a different viewpoint on this ordinance than others that are sitting at the table with me, and that's perfectly fine. And tonight's apparently going to be a night when I talk about a lot of personal things on accident. I did have a student who unfortunately passed away due to an ATV accident. That was not his fault. And ordinances like this with golf carts are the same thing, the same instance, and there are lots of safety concerns. And unfortunately, I don't feel like our community has quite reached the infrastructure that allows us to have certain forms of transportation, and even sometimes for pedestrians, safety. And so that is a huge concern for me. But on top of that, you know, we talk a lot about public safety, and this is adding a load to our public safety. This is adding extra work for them, and for those reasons, I'll be brief, for those reasons, this will be a no for me. And I just wanted to be transparent with that, so thank you.
Do other council members have any questions, comments for Phil?
Well, this has nothing to do with ATV ordinance, which is already in place. And I think, as I've said before, just because you can make a rule is no sign that you should make a rule. And I think we are, if we're not going to pass this ordinance, then I think we are depriving certain citizens of the community of a normal thing, which is throughout the state of Iowa, most communities have an ordinance which allows golf carts to be on the streets under certain regulations. So when this comes up for a vote, if it does, I'll vote yes.
The only concern, I guess, that I have, and this is just my personal opinion, is I think we also need to be very careful when some of this kind of stuff gets approved. How much more work is that going to be for our police department to enforce? Because no matter what you have available, you know people are going to not follow the rules and regulations. They don't follow the rules and regulations when they drive their vehicle. And we've got our police staff stretched pretty thin already as it is, and I know they've had a lot of instances where they've had to go out and deal with UTV incidences. So I would guess I would just caution the council to also consider, anytime you pass something new, there's going to be an enforcement component that comes along with that, and you got to make sure that we're not overburdening city staff who already are overburdened. So that would be my only comment about approving these kind of things. And there's a lot of towns that still don't approve it. There are some that do, but not everybody approves it.
I was told that Jerry Phillips went down and talked to our chief, and he did not oppose it. Now, if that's wrong, he's sitting here, he can tell me he didn't oppose it, but as far as I know, you do not oppose this ordinance.
I told Jerry Phillips the same, I would say now, if the...
I told Jerry Phillips the same, I would say now, if the council has an appetite for this, we will enforce whatever laws you folks deem necessary, but I'm neither for nor against it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments from counsel? If not, Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavanis?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
No.
The first motion passes.
Okay, we have no departmental board or commission recommendations tonight, so we'll move on to resolutions.
Resolution number one sixty-two twenty twenty-four, approving the quarterly budgeted fund transfers for June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, as presented by the Finance Department. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number one sixty-two twenty twenty-four.
Move the recommendation. Second.
Okay, Mr. O'Donnell, it's all yours.
Thank you. First, I'd like to say I've been to a lot of council meetings, but this is the first one with a soundtrack, so.
I'm gonna recommend we change that.
Just for you, just for you.
Maybe with a little bit less volume, though. The resolution approves the quarterly budgeted fund, budgeted fund transfers for June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, as required by state, state law. A separate resolution transferring franchise fees in support of public safety will be presented at the August twentieth meeting. This is due to the receipt of the funds coming in after the agenda deadline for the meeting. We did get Mid-America in time, but we did not get Alliance until actually Monday. So what I will, I will tell you is that the franchise fees revenues came just short of budgeted by nine thousand dollars. So that is some welcomed information, that we're pretty much on target in that area.
On franchise fees?
On franchise fees, yes.
Does counsel have any questions for Mr. O'Donnell?
Talk about increasing your labor. This looks like another challenge, although we are getting equipment to handle it, I'm sure.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Nope, I'll withdraw my comment.
Any other questions from counsel? If not, Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavanis?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Resolution number one sixty-three twenty twenty-four, approving UMB Bank of West Des Moines, Iowa to serve as paying agent, note registrar, and transfer agent, approving the paying agent and note registrar and transfer agent agreement and authorizing the execution of the agreement. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number one sixty-three twenty twenty-four.
Recommend, move the recommendation.
Second.
Okay, Mr. O'Donnell.
As the title states, this resolution names UMB Bank, N.A., as all those things. They currently act in the same capacity for the other city bond issuances, and this is for the twenty twenty-four capital improvement bonds.
Counsel, have any questions for Mr. O'Donnell regarding this issue? If not, Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavanis?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Resolution number one sixty-four twenty twenty-four, approving and authorizing a form of loan agreement and authorizing and providing for the issuance of six million five hundred and forty thousand general obligation capital loan notes, series twenty twenty-four, and levying a tax to pay said notes. Approval of the tax exemption certificate and continuing disclosure certificate. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number one sixty-four twenty twenty-four.
Move the recommendation.
Second.
All right, Mr. O'Donnell.
Thank you. The resolution approves, does approve the loan agreement for the twenty twenty-four capital improvement bonds in the amount of six million five hundred and forty thousand. The actual amount that we will receive is larger than that, because that includes the premium, which, when you look at the documents, the premium amount, which is the urban renewal bonds that we approved at a, at a separate public hearing. So that, it's actually, the total amount is closer to six point eight million. The say, the, the bonds have an average yield of three point five five percent, and it is sold as a qualifying issuance, so the bonds are tax exempt.
Counsel, have any questions for Mr. O'Donnell? If not, Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavanis?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Resolution number one sixty-five twenty twenty-four, approving an inter-fund loan from Fund One Twenty-One Local Option Sales Tax to Fund One Fifty-One dash four thirty-two, Other Bond Projects, which is the City Hall project, in the amount of not to exceed one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number one sixty-five twenty twenty-four.
Move the recommendation.
Second.
Okay, Mr. O'Donnell.
Public Works Director Bergmeyer has indicated that additional work as part of the City Hall renovation has been identified. These items are structural and needed, and are as follows. Replace flashing around the chimney. This is allowing water to get behind the walls with an estimated cost of seven thousand to ten thousand dollars to solve that problem. Replace galvanized water lines under the second floor slab with copper lines. The lines feed the second and third floor bathrooms. Estimated cost is forty to fifty thousand dollars. A contingency of forty thousand dollars was included in the original budget for the project. Of that amount, twenty-seven thousand five hundred and twenty-four dollars and fifty-eight cents has been allocated to other items. Additional asbestos material removal is also required, that is expected to use the remainder of the contingency. The original financing of the project was as follows. From the twenty twenty-two bond, seven hundred thousand dollars. From ARPA funds, two million one hundred and thirty thousand seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars. From the general fund, two hundred and ninety thousand six, six sixty-nine. And franchise fees, six hundred and sixty thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars, for a total of three million seven hundred and eighty-two thousand two hundred and thirty-two dollars, and that is the contract amount with contingency. The funding allocation has been modified since the contract approval as such. We still receive seven hundred thousand dollars from the twenty twenty-two bonds. The ARPA amount increased to two million four hundred and thirty-nine thousand and sixteen dollars. The franchise fee amount was reduced to two hundred and ninety-one thousand twenty-two dollars. And my understanding is, is that's because the franchise fees did not come in at that time within budget estimates. And the general fund amount remained at two hundred and ninety thousand six hundred and ninety-nine dollars. This creates a total of three million seven hundred and twenty thousand seven hundred and six dollars, which is sixty-one thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars short of the original contract. The proposed inter-fun, inter-lun, inter-fund loan for a hundred and fifty thousand, this amount will cover the shortfall, fund the changes orders, and provide additional contingency as follows. The loan is one hundred and fifty thousand, the shortfall is sixty-one thousand five hundred and twenty-five, change order is sixty thousand, leaves available contingency of twenty-eight thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars. And I did attach the amortization schedule for the loan as part of the packet.
Counsel, have any questions for Mr. O'Donnell? Okay, if not, Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavanis?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Resolution number one sixty-six twenty twenty-four, repealing resolution number one sixty-seven twenty nineteen and fixing new minimum fines for specific city offenses and violations of sections of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Atumwa, Iowa. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number one sixty-six twenty twenty-four.
Move the recommendation.
Second.
And Phil, I believe you're gonna take this?
Yeah, so in accordance with section one dash six-two of the Code of Ordinances, the city council is responsible for establishing a schedule of minimum fines for specific city offenses and violations of city code. Last time that schedule was updated was August sixth of twenty nineteen, by adoption of resolution number one six seven twenty nineteen. The city's prosecution firm had contacted staff to review the schedule of fines to ensure consistency with the fines scheduled by Iowa code. Minimum fines have been reviewed by the city attorney with the recommendation for revisions as attached in resolution number one sixty-six twenty twenty-four.
How often should these kind of things be reviewed? Because it seems like since twenty nineteen, that's been five years. That seems like it's almost too long.
Well, I mean, if there's any changes that occur, it could be more frequent, you know, depending on if there's any state violations, or if there's anything at a local level. We can certainly review those, you know, on an annual or biannual basis. One, to make sure that they're consistent with any changes in Iowa state code. But also, are they serving the purpose of what we hope for, that they're serving as a deterrent? That they're, you know, trying to ensure that there isn't recidivism of repeat offenses, things like that, so. You know, I would say, I wouldn't do it any more frequently than annually, but at least probably biannually would be a good start.
So most of these fines in here are set by state code, or is it mainly set by city code?
Both.
Okay.
I mean, there's a lot of the traffic offenses that are set by state. You know, and some of them that are at the local level, obviously, like their local ordinances, those are gonna be set locally.
Okay. Does counsel have any questions for Phil?
Will this come up again for conversation as far as setting a different time, other than five years, for review?
Yeah, I mean, it, you can definitely set that. I mean, you wouldn't have to. If you wanted to have a set timeline for that, we could talk about that and set something. But otherwise, I would say just a best practice, working with the police chief to have that more frequently.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Phil? If not, Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavanis?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Resolution number one sixty-seven twenty twenty-four, approving the purchase of computer equipment from CDWG in the amount of one hundred and forty-three thousand nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars and eighty-eight cents for the VM host and tier-one SAN upgrade project for IT twenty twenty-five CIP. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number one sixty-seven twenty twenty-four.
Move the recommendation.
Second.
All right, Edward Wilson, it's all yours.
All right, thank you, mayor and counsel. Before you, this evening is a request to replace.
Hi, Logan. Now, mute. That still shows, maybe mute.
The phone quit working when the music stopped.
Good thing we have a tech guy here.
Logan, are you there? Logan, can you hear us? Logan, can you hear us? All of a sudden, you just cut off. You can call back in, that's ready. So this project will, will replace two servers and add two storage units. One server and one storage unit will be hosted at the Law Center, and the other set will be hosted at City Hall. All departments utilize this for their day-to-day storage and data processing. It will host the new finance system that we are working on implementing. I did get two quotes for the servers and storage. One is Dell Equipment through CDW Government. The other one is HP Equipment through Marco. I recommend we take the CDW quote.
Hello?
Hi, Rick, this is Logan. I just had audio issues.
Yeah, I don't know, all of a sudden you got cut off. We didn't, we didn't know what happened, so I'm glad you were able to call back in.
Yep, I apologize.
No, that's fine. Go ahead.
Any questions?
Oh, you're done explaining?
Yep, I'm done.
I thought you were gonna talk more. Does counsel have any questions for Mr. Wilson?
Do you have a specific reason for recommending the CDW company?
Just mainly the lower, lower cost.
Okay. Service to be as good and all that kind of stuff?
This does include a five-year warranty and five years of support, so.
That's worth its weight in gold.
Yeah, they, they both do, but.
Okay.
Any other questions from counsel? If not, Chris will go ahead and take the roll.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavanis?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution number one sixty-eight twenty twenty-four, awarding the contract for asbestos abatement and demolition of the condemned property at nine thirty-two West Third to Weston McKee for one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for asbestos abatement and nine thousand dollars for demolition, for a total bid of ten thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number one sixty-eight twenty twenty-four.
Move the recommendation.
Second.
Okay, Zach.
All right, thank you, mayor, thank you, counsel. All, all of the next four items are related to a bid opening that we had for demolition of condemned properties on July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four. We had really competitive bids on all of these, and we're actually pretty pleased with all of the bids that we received. This one is for the property at nine thirty-two West Third, which is, like I said, a condemned property. We received four bids, and the best bid was from Weston McKee in the amount of ten thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, and we recommend awarding him that contract.
Counsel, have any questions for Zach regarding this property? If not, Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavanis?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Resolution number one sixty-nine twenty twenty-four, awarding the contract for asbestos abatement and demolition of the condemned property at twenty-seven twenty-one Branham to Weston McKee for five hundred dollars asbestos abatement and ten thousand dollars for demolition, for a total bid of ten thousand five hundred dollars. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number one sixty-nine twenty twenty-four.
Move the recommendation.
Second.
Okay, Zach.
Thank you, mayor. This bid, Weston McKee also had the best bid, this time in the amount of five thousand, or ten thousand five hundred. There were four bids again this time, and we do recommend awarding it to Weston, and I hope that he starts with this one. This one's been a really big thorn in our side. The police department was out there with us today and still had to deal with folks, so this one can't get down soon enough.
Is the wide variation in asbestos removal fees contributed primarily to the fact that some of these contractors don't do that internally themselves, so they have to contract with somebody to come in and do it on their behalf?
That's definitely part of it. There aren't as many folks that do the asbestos work. Also, property by property, it's gonna vary a lot based on how much contamination there is. Some of them, there's almost nothing. It might just be a flu liner or something like that, that they can take out pretty easily. Some of them, it's drywall joint compounds, so they basically have to remove all of the walls in a, you know, prescribed process.
Counsel, have any questions for Zach regarding this property?
Zach, I've only lived here eighty years. I don't know where Branham Street is. Can you tell me where that is?
It's all the way out on the east end. It's about as far east as you can go out on East Main. Branham's out there.
Okay, thank you.
It's off of Tacoma.
Yep, off of Tacoma.
Any other questions from counsel regarding this property? If not, Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavanis?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Resolution number one seventy twenty twenty-four, awarding the contract for asbestos abatement and demolition of the condemned property at five thirty-eight Summit to Dustin Smith of Environmental Edge for four thousand seven hundred dollars for asbestos abatement and seven thousand two hundred dollars for demolition, for a total bid of eleven thousand nine hundred dollars. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number one seventy twenty twenty-four.
Move the recommendation.
Second.
Okay, Zach.
All right, thank you, mayor. This one, we received five bids. The best bid was from Dustin Smith in the amount of eleven thousand nine hundred dollars, and we recommend awarding him the contract.
Counsel, have any questions for Zach regarding this particular property?
Does Dustin Smith do things for us? Has he done things for us in the past?
Yes, yep. He will have demolished, he's demolished homes for us in the past.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from counsel? Okay, if not, Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavanis?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Resolution number one seventy-one twenty twenty-four, awarding the contract for asbestos abatement and demolition of the condemned property at six oh six Spring Street to Weston McKee for eight thousand five hundred dollars asbestos to Weston McKee for eight thousand, five hundred dollars asbestos abatement and nine thousand dollars for demolition for a total bid of seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars. Recommendation pass and adopt resolution number one seventy-one, twenty twenty-four.
Move the recommendation.
Second. Okay, Zach.
Thank you, mayor. And then this one, we received four bids, and Weston McKee, this is the third one that he'll win tonight, but he had the best bid in the amount of seventeen thousand, five hundred.
Counsel have any questions for Zach regarding this property?
Zach, is there any recovery for the city on these expenses?
So, we assess these costs to the property tax in the same manner that we do mowing assessments and things like that. But if you are an owner of a derelict house like this, and we've demolished the house that was there, you have very little incentive to pay that property tax.
So, basically, there is no resolution to get?
The best thing that we get is, after assessing those taxes, we usually get the first bite of the public bidder's tax sale to acquire the property. We can choose to remove that assessment and we can try to get something else put there. And we've been pretty successful at doing that, especially over the last couple of years, but that's about the best we can do. There's definitely some cases where we could try to be, you know, there might be something else we can do. We can talk to the attorneys about if there's anything else we can do, but a lot of the times, it's a blood from a tournip kind of situation and we just need to get them down.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from counsel? If not, Chris will take the role.
Counsel member Hoffman?
Yes.
Counsel member McIntyre?
Yes.
Counsel member Cavaness?
Yes.
Counsel member Basu?
Yes.
Resolution number one seventy-two, twenty twenty-four, accepting the work as final and complete and approving the final pay request for the Richmond Avenue Pump Station Improvements Project. Recommendation pass and adopt resolution number one seventy-two, twenty twenty-four.
Move the recommendation.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Birdmeyer.
Thank you, mayor. So, this project consisted of, this is, this project consisted of improvements to a sixteen-inch sanitary sewer force main at the Richmond Avenue Pump Station, which including, included trench twelve-inch and sixteen-inch force main piping, eight-inch and twelve-inch piping in the interior, also included some valves and air release valves and existing pits, portable pump connections and associated miscellaneous work. The pump station is located on the north side of Richmond Avenue to the west of Milner Street. There's a change order which increases the contract amount by two hundred dollars for quantity adjustments. DC Concrete and Construction of Dowd's Iowa has completed this project according to the plan specifications. This will authorize approval of change order one with final payment releasing all retainage. The original contract was eighty-six thousand, seven fifty, the change order is for two hundred dollars, which gives a new contract amount of eighty-six thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars, less the previous payments, amount to a final payment of six thousand, four hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents. And with the budget of ninety thousand dollars, it came in under budget. It's like a short twenty-minute time lapse of the project.
Twenty minutes?
Just a few pictures of the project, so you guys know what you're approving.
It'd be nice if I could see the pictures.
Apparently, someone stole the.
You need to move over.
You can show me the pictures tomorrow. On the left-hand side, it shows the original configuration of the pump station. There's a gray pipe going up the right-hand side and out the right. Took that piping away, it's just an old twelve-inch cast iron main that had holes in it, and it's been there for sixty years. And we put new piping up the left-hand side of the, on the right-hand picture, on the left-hand side of the pump station. It goes up into the left now and goes out. You can see where the force main was put in about ten years ago as part of sewer separation. It was stubbed out just behind the back of curve there, and you can kind of see the hole underneath the street. So, rather than disrupting traffic and patching that in, that was, most of the change order was to put global bill underneath there and shore the street back up. Next picture. This is the piping going to the pump station. You can see it comes in, has a forty-five, goes through the wall. There's a valve there and a T that comes out to the right, so if we ever have to work on the pump station again, we can bypass pump. Just putting the pump in the wet well, bypass pump around the pump station, so we don't have to have any CSOs into the Lagoon Park. Next picture. This shows it mostly backfilled, you can see the valve risers, well, you can't see them because the picture's too dark and far away, but if you're closer, you could see the valve risers coming up to the ground and then the red pipe coming out, kind of curving over the right-hand side with the flange on it. That's where we bypass bumped into, if we ever have to bypass the pump station for mechanical reasons. I think there's one more picture, nope, that was the last one. Okay, so, that's pictures of it. This is the next project coming up, so.
Nice moving.
Counsel have any questions for Philip? If not, Chris will take the role.
Counsel member Hoffman?
Yes.
Counsel member McIntyre?
Yes.
Counsel member Cavaness?
Yes.
Counsel member Basu?
Yes.
Resolution number one seventy-three, twenty twenty-four, accepting the work as final and complete and approving the final pay request for the Bridgeview Hotel Parking Lot Extension Project. Recommendation pass and adopt resolution number one seventy-three, twenty twenty-four.
Move the recommendation.
Second.
All right, thank you, mayor. So, this project consisted of constructing a four thousand, five hundred and seventy-five square yard parking lot at the south end of the existing Bridgeview Parking Lot. It also included four hundred and fifty lineal feet of twenty-four inch RCP and a new storm sewer installation that removes storm sewer from the existing sanitary lines. This project provided additional one hundred and seventeen paid parking spaces. Change order number one decreased the contract sum by two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars and forty-one cents for quantity adjustments. DC Concrete and Construction of Dowd's Iowa has completed this above-reference project according to the plans and specifications. This work will authorize approval of change order number one with the final payment releasing all retainage. Original contract was four hundred and seventy-three thousand, one hundred and forty-three dollars and fifty cents. Minus the change order is, gave a final contract amount of four hundred and seventy thousand, three hundred and sixty-seven dollars and nine cents, unless all previous payments gave a final amount due of forty-one thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars and fourteen cents. I also want to say to the contractor, signed an agreement before we brought this to counsel, that they will come back when the seeding window opens up this fall to reseed the area around the parking lot, because the seeding did not take this spring. So, they'll, they'll come back and reseed that. Is there any way to change the brightness on that, so the pictures aren't so dark? Probably not. Anyway, this picture there is of all the storm sewer piping and intakes and the manholes that we had for the project. I just want to show this, they're digging across Market Street, that's the old brick street under the asphalt, and there's two trolley tracks. Kind of see them on the, right by the guy's foot, and then over by the chunk of concrete is another trolley track, so we still have trolley tracks all over town from, you know, the nineteen-tens, nineteen-twenty's. So, that's kind of neat to find. This shows him putting in the intake, he gotten all the storm sewer in. That was the last piece of storm sewer to go in, so I wanted to give a picture of that. Wiggly line, that's a concrete pumper truck, so he's pumping one of the sets of joints coming up this way, this, one of his boards, he poured it in four different sections. And then, that's a picture of the parking lot when it was done last fall. And then now, this is what it looks like now, it's been striped and the lights are up and been backfilled. Any questions?
Does it have more than seventeen parking spaces in this new southern parking lot? Is that about the number of parking spaces? Maybe Scott, you could ask this, does this replenish the parking spaces you lost with the new hotel? Is it pretty much a wash, or did you gain extra parking spaces?
We'll net out, if, if the hotel is at full occupancy, which is eighty-four rooms plus, like, say, six or seven staff people, I believe we netted out on a positive gain of twenty to thirty additional parking spaces on concrete before, already you can start. So, compared to what it was pre-hotel, pre-construction, we'll have a, so if the hotel is only half full and we pick up, say, another forty-five spaces, then you're adding that gain of potentially seventy-five spaces.
But we also have the parking lot across the street now, too.
Yeah, that's the whole parking, sorry, that was all the new parking, we've been both of those, all three lots.
Does counsel have any questions for Philip regarding this topic? If not, Chris will take the role.
Counsel member Hoffman? Counsel member McIntyre?
Yes.
Counsel member Cavaness?
Yes.
Counsel member Basu?
Yes.
Resolution number one seventy-five, twenty twenty-four, approving twenty twenty-four RFP number two James Street Emergency Sewer Repair and authorizing the mayor to sign. Recommendation pass and adopt resolution number one seventy-five, twenty twenty-four.
Move the recommendation.
Okay, Philip.
All right, thank you, mayor. So, this resolution will approve payment to DC Concrete and Construction for emergency pair works of the James Street Sewer. So, a section of the James Street Sewer failed and plugged the sewer line. We brought in a pump to bypass the sewer flow, but groundwater infiltration into the defect at the failure point caused a void deform under the street. The void quickly grew to about six feet deep, necessitating an immediate emergency repair. Every contractor we spoke to commented on the volume of groundwater, was the most I'd ever seen and most reluctant to even bid it. We sent the RFP to three contractors, only one sent a response, the rates were reasonable for the situation. We anticipated the contractor would need eight de-watering wells, they ended up needing eleven de-watering wells. They also drove sheet piles twenty feet deep, trying to block the groundwater from coming in. It still didn't work, as you'll see in the pictures. Water and sand were continually flowing under the piles and boiling up into the work area. That caused cave-offs and subsidence outside the sheet piling, which broke the water line next to it in two different spots, so we had to take out even more street than we originally wanted to. We ended up replacing one manhole, fifty lineal feet of sewer, and two sewer laterals. The contractor hauled in two hundred and twenty-one cubic yards of suitable fill to replace the material removed from the trench and from all the water blowing up in it, and they had to continually remove. And we also had to pay for two hundred tons of roadstone to be able to patch the street in till we could come back in, which we're gonna do next week with our own city crews and pave the street back in. DC Concrete and Construction completed this project for a total cost of one hundred and twenty-five thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars. This resolution will authorize final payment for this work. So, this is a picture, this is the first couple spots he demolished, there's a, the manhole's on the right-hand side of that hole. The hole's about six feet deep, next to the manhole, and fifteen feet away from it, we drilled a hole in it before he got there and he could drop a prod rod down, and there was nothing there either, the whole street was undermined. This was a matter of days after the, after the collapse happened. The material there is just sand, pure sand, it's just, there's, well, you'll see the next, show the next picture. So, you can see there's four de-watering wells, and these are fifteen, twenty feet apart. So, we had eight pumps running simultaneously, trying to get the water level down, and it didn't work. It wasn't enough, he ended up putting three wells inside the trench, and it still wasn't enough. You can go to the next, next slide. This shows all the water, there's, if you could see it better, there's a bunch of water and sand inside the shoring, because it's just continually boiling up from outside. And there's a shoring on each side. Go to the next picture. So, on the left-hand side, you can see there's a dark mud spot about eight inches above the dirt. That's where the ground used to be outside there, and it sunk about eight inches all over. The whole thing just settled down, that much like that's what pulled on the water main and pulled it out. And then on the right-hand side, you can see big chunks of grass and stuff just falling off the edges on either side, where it would sink down and this stuff just continually collapsed in there. And of course, it's full of water still. Next picture. In front of the, so that's the shoring we had originally, you can see all the wells in there, and you see wells inside there. On that right-hand side, they're trying to remove the concrete and all the material from above the water main, this is after the first time the water main broke. Even had to remove everything from the top of it, it broke a second time, because stuff was continually just washing in to the excavation. And I think the last one is after they got it backfilled, you can see how big the area ended up being, they had a backfill. We tried to reuse as much material as we could, but most we took out of there was soup, basically, by the time you dug it out. Definitely a difficult project. The city does not have the equipment to do this, the contractor had to rent a excavator big enough to handle twenty-foot sheet piles, which he should have got one that handled twenty-five-foot sheet piles, but I don't think that would have been enough either. So, we had eight pumps running for two weeks straight, and the water level never changed. It's just a bad situation.
Now that this is done, do you feel like it's safe and will stay there, or do you know?
No, so, honestly, there's a number of sewers in this area, they're all clay sewers, and we have a lot of trouble cleaning them, a lot of times, we'll clean them as little as possible. Every time we clean the sewers out, it just allows more sand to wash in. So, what I want to do is budget some money for next year to line all the sewers in this area that we can't get through. And what lining it'll do is it'll put a cured-in-place liner inside the clay pipe. They're all set, you know, they're, they're big pipes, they don't, the capacity reduction won't, won't matter. But it'll, it'll line these pipes and it'll keep the sand from infiltrating in there and causing more problems like this. If you remember, we had a break just north of here last fall that the contractor couldn't hardly fix either, so. Yeah, it was a bad situation all around, and we're gonna have a contractor come in and line each end of this repair, because every time you dig back, trying to expose a piece of pipe, it just collapses in and you have to dig farther back, so we ended up shoving a pipe inside the clay pipe to hold them together so they wouldn't fall out. And we want to line each end of that in case there's, so there won't be any leakage in there, but we, it's a separate, it's a separate skill, so you can't have the same contractor do both.
So, it looks to me like if the city's ever short of water, we know where to go tap.
Yeah, we tried to figure out how many gallons that was a day, it was, I think, three hundred thousand, I was figuring, a day, three hundred thousand gallons a day we were pumping out of there. And that was not, and we, last fall when we did it, it was drought, you know, it hadn't rained out in three months and it was still the same amount of water. I don't know where, it comes straight from the river somewhere, I don't know. I don't know.
So, there's a high water table there somewhere?
Yeah, that water, when it rains out, the water's maybe six feet below, we'll have water coming in manholes and stuff around there, too, but at this, when we did this, we maintained the water table maybe eight feet down, but the pipes, ten feet down, so wasn't enough.
Counsel have any questions for Philip regarding this project? I'm glad you at least had one person respond to the RFP.
Yeah, he's, it was, nobody wanted to do it, and luckily, he
I can see now.
I don't think he'll bid anything like that again, though, or if he does, it'll be even more money next time, because I don't think they made out very well on it.
Any other questions for counsel, for Philip? If not, Chris will take the role.
Counsel member Hoffman?
Yes.
Counsel member McIntyre?
Yes.
Counsel member Cavaness?
Yes.
Counsel member Basu?
Yes.
Resolution number one seventy-seven, twenty twenty-four, approving change requests number four and number nine for the city hall improvements project. Recommendation pass and adopt resolution number one seventy-seven, twenty twenty-four.
Move the recommendation.
Second. Okay, Phil.
All right, thank you, mayor. So, this is kind of attached to the budget amendment that Cole presented earlier, when he transferred money or loaned money to the, the city hall project. And the numbers are kind of confusing, but I wanted to keep them consistent with the order we were giving them from the contractor, because a lot of the contract change orders went into the contingency and these two went out, but I didn't want to rename them one and two and have two change orders, one and two, so it's just easier to do this way. So, change request number four, provided compensation to the contractor for replacing step flashing around the chimney to stop water from getting in behind the walls. And change request number nine would provide compensation for the replacement of the galvanized water lines below the second floor slab and up to the third floor restrooms. These galvanized lines are at the end of their useful life and they're at a risk, they pose a risk to the new construction on first floor. All other change requests have been run through the contingency allowance in this contract. Change number number four was outside the scope of the original project, being on the roof, and then change request number nine was just too large to be included with the contingency, so they're being added to the contract. The architect has reviewed and accepted these change requests. This change order, that number's wrong there, change order. This change order increased the contract amount by forty-seven thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars to give a new contract amount of three million, eight hundred and thirty-five thousand, eight hundred and twenty-two dollars. So, we had seven to ten thousand for
So, we had 7,000 to 10,000 for the step flashing is what we estimated and we got the change order from the contractor back. It was 7,590 and we assumed, we estimated 40,000 to 60,000 for the galvanized line replacement and then it'd be 46,000 was the number we got from the contractor. So, both within what we expected them to be.
Have they pretty much got all the heating and, the new heating and air conditioning at least installed on the network run?
No, they got, they got quite a bit more to do. There's, that's a lot of what they're working on now. There's a, there's a lot of ducting to put in.
Yeah.
So.
Counsel have any questions for Philip regarding this?
Nope.
If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Resolution number 178, 2024, approving the Second Amendment to Professional Services Agreement for Engineering Services between the City of Atumwa and Veenstra and Kim Incorporated for the Blake's Branch Phase Eight Division Two Sewer Separation Project. Recommendation pass and adopt resolution number 178, 2024.
Move the recommendation.
Second. Okay, Phil.
Thank you, Mayor. So, the City of Atumwa entered into an agreement for professional services with Veenstra and Kim Incorporated on June 1st, 2021. This agreement was for professional services to design Phase Eight Division Two. Since then, the city has split these into divisions two and three and expanded the scope of work to include more area. There have been some recent changes though that have added to the project scope once again. We kind of value engineered the, the Division Three to remove two expensive conflict structures and replace them by trenchless methods to cross under Blake's Branch Sewer and not have to cut into sewer itself. These trenchless methods have also been added next to two houses to reduce the chance of an open excavation causing damage. We also modified the storm sewer to accommodate a paved parking lot the school wants to put in near the new tennis courts. And then we moved the intersection of Norris Street to line up with Gera where it crosses Jefferson. Professional services have also been added to provide easement documentation for the Division Three parcels. The Second Amendment to Professional Services Agreement will add design services for additional work as outlined above. Total additional cost as outlined in the agreement shall not exceed the sum of $125,000. So, the original, original agreement was for $695,000. We amended it once last fall for $39,800. This one will increase it by $125,000 for a total price of $859,800. And I have Randy Johnson with Veenstra and Kim here too, if you have any questions about what's involved with the, the scope changes.
Randy Johnson, Veenstra and Kim. Been here a few times before. As you know, Veenstra and Kim's been helping out for the last 20 years with sewer separation. We've had 10 different, I guess, areas or responsibilities. We're on Phase Eight and this is Division Three. So, Division One, you guys probably have seen was Main Street South. That was about a $13 million project. We had East of Iowa Separation Project was another $2 million. We have Division Two, which is Fourth Street under construction right now, about $5 million. And so, this is the Division Three, which we plan on bringing in the next meeting, the...
Yeah, so, August 20th, we're going to do it kind of different than what we normally do. So, what we're going to do with the first resolution is we're going to approve construction and then approve the dates for bidding and the date for the public hearing. And the public hearing will take place when we award the contract. And that'll take place in, in September 25th. So, the Division Three is at the end of its design and we're just kind of hitting the home stretch here to get it done so we can get it out for bid.
So, at that time, we'll give a presentation, a little PowerPoint, kind of show what it is. I mean, it's about 20 blocks of paving, 3,000 feet of the large trunk sewer, you know, 10,000 feet of water main, 15,000 is storm sewer. So, it'll be a very large project similar to the Division One project. And I'm here to answer any questions.
Counsel have any questions? Okay, thank you for coming. If there's no further questions, then Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
The next item, I'm sorry. Do you have something you want to say?
Thank you.
Oh, okay, all right. The next item on our agenda is where I ask if anyone in the audience would like to speak on any non-agenda items tonight that are not on our agenda. Okay. Does counsel have any communications or any announcements they would like to make to